The following program is made possible by First State Bank. Offering secure online and mobile banking, First State Bank is ready to serve your financial needs with locations in Warren, Hermitage, and Hampton. First State Bank, the difference is leadership. Member FDIC, equal housing lender.
Alderman Marshall. Alderman Burks Frazier.
Here.
Alderman Henderson.
Here.
Alderman Tolfree.
Present.
Alderman Mosman.
Here.
And Alderman Atkins.
Present.
Okay, just for everybody's information, Alderman Atkins had to be out of town tonight on her work, but she is on the telephone. She will be participating in the meeting, and I received a message just a few minutes ago from Alderman Marshall indicated she was tied up but expected to be here, so hopefully she will come in. But we do have a forum, so we will continue. March 13th, 2023, minutes, council members.
I know that the minutes for March 13th be approved as emailed and received by hard copy. Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any question, discussion, correction concerning the minutes? All those in favor, show of hands, please. And Alderman Atkins, your vote?
I agree. I'll raise my hand.
Okay. You go ahead and tell me when you raise your hand, that's okay. All right, that's five in favor and one absent. All right, city clerk, you've got the financial information for them, you should briefly go over that. And this is all in your package, council members.
Okay, the administrative expenses were $1,300. One, I'm sorry, $134,048.16. Law enforcement expenses were $334,086.50. Fire was $115,032.69. Building codes was $7,603.16. District court, $22,238.70. Municipal building, $4,131.73. Cultural center was $2,636.31. Armory, $11,389.83. Shitty range, $12,304.22. Senior citizen center, $158.91. Other was $958.42. Airport, $2,951.95. Economic development was $6,269.76. Not yet.
Present.
Oh, street, I'm so sorry. I always forget that. Street was $113,886.6.
Knows a lot more information there than just, that's just the total expenditures for the month by category, by budget category.
I know that we approved the clerk's statement of revenue and expenditure as presented. Second.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Burks Frazier, you're recognized.
Okay, so on the cultural center, we had, we paid $2,000 on what and bills? I'm sorry, I don't have mine. Just in. Sorry.
That would be one, well, let's see here.
Like, if we're not using it, I know we paid...
No, but we pay all the bills, remember?
Right, okay.
We paid the operating costs, and then we are...
Reimbursed.
Well, for what the school owes, whenever they owe money, and they're the only ones using it right now.
Right.
And of course, you'll have report later over there on the cultural center for the month, which will show you, I think, all that stuff.
Okay.
But we pay all the bills on the front end, and then we bill them for their part.
So if the city doesn't use it, and this only reflects the energy and use from the school, would we be reimbursed the $2,600?
It depends on the formula, but yes, they, they're the only ones using it, they would pay the...
Have we allowed someone else to use it?
No.
Then it should be on them.
Okay, that's what I was just wondering.
Not right now, we're not.
Sure, right, because last time.
Because of situations, yes. But under normal circumstances, if somebody rented it...
Sure.
Then that rental revenue would be subtracted from the total owed, and then according to the funding formula, the city or the school district would pay. And they pay the vast majority of it because they use it...
More than we do.
You know, 99% of the time.
Okay.
Answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think we got a motion and a second on the bills, so, I mean, on the financial report, so question or discussion?
Call for a vote.
All those in favor of approval, show of hands. I see four. And Alderman Atkins also responds in the infirmary, so that's five votes in favor, one absent. All right, would you go ahead with the sales tax reports and city-county sales tax?
Yes, the city sales tax for March was $79,145.79, which was down about 6% from this time last year. And the county tax was $57,779.35, which was down about 4% from this time last year.
We continue to have some drop off in our sales tax revenue. Of course, last year, I think was kind of a special year with a lot of the pandemic funding and so forth and so on, but we are down some, although it's still holding up there pretty good. It's not taking a free fall, but it's down. And I'm sorry, counsel, I failed to call your attention, your cash balances was right behind your financial report. Quite frankly, that may be the most important thing for you to look at, your cash balances, make sure you know exactly what we got and where it is right now.
I still say, ma'am, but compared to the years before, we're still up.
Yes, sir. I agree with you, Mr. Overeem. Yeah, yeah, I think we're, I think our sales tax is still doing pretty good. Okay, so we got both, any questions on city-county sales tax? District court, there's a report on the district court that's submitted to us by the court clerk's office, who's showing you what's going on there. And there is the overtime report.
Do we actually get that on a quarterly basis? It's not necessary that you do it every month, but...
I think this is...
This was to catch you.
This, this is actually gets us on the quarterly basis now, you're right, council member Henderson, thank you. All right, we'll move to item six on the agenda. We've got three resolutions to adopt, and I would, with the council permission, I'd like to do two of them kind of back-to-back here. I don't have them in the same order, and that would be former council member Fullerton and, and Mr. Fullerton, we got separate resolutions for each of them, and I'm going to ask that we do Mr. Fullerton's first, so we need to...
Read it and...
Read it, and then we will act on that. This is proposed resolution A679. Resolution honoring Samuel Baker Fullerton Jr. Whereas Samuel Baker Fullerton Jr. was loved by community of Warren, valued citizen of Warren, Arkansas, whereas Samuel Baker Fullerton was a wonderful, loving father to three children. We're blessed to have them with us here tonight. Samuel Baker Fullerton III and Phyllis, Reverend Dr. Fairfax Fullerton, Arthur Keen Fullerton, Sam was married to the love of his life, Miss Tommy Fuffa Triplet Fullerton for 69 years, whereas Sam graduated from Culver Military Academy, the Mark School, and the University of Arkansas with a degree in business administration. Whereas Sam served as a second lieutenant in the United States Air Force, where he served as a war planner and in military logistics. In the reserves, Sam reached the rank of captain. And whereas in 1956, Sam returned to his hometown, Warren, Arkansas. Sam worked as an executive in the Bradley Lumber Company. He later founded and led Morrow Gravel, Morrow Incorporated, and LA Log Trailer. He served as a director of the Arkansas General Contractors. He built many sections of the Arkansas Interstate System, including the I-40, I-430, I-530. And whereas, following his retirement, Sam was inducted into the Arkansas Construction Hall of Fame in 2004. He served three decades as the school board representative and chairman of the Bradley County Equalization Board. He also donated to site work to construct the Warren High School Auditorium of the, of the cultural center and lumberjack stadium, currently known as Jim Hurley Jr. Stadium. Whereas Sam donated playground material for the elementary school, he did the site preparation for the Warren Municipal Airport, also served as a charter member of the Southeast Arkansas Regional Intermodal Authority and was treasurer of that organization for 13 years. Whereas Sam was both an elder and a deacon at the First Presbyterian Church, where he served on the board of Arkansas Presbyterian Foundation and the Fern Cliff Board. He was a lifelong supporter of the Arkansas Razorbacks, a Brawls Matthews Scholarship donor, and a member of ZIA Chapter of Kappa Sigma Paternity. Be it resolved by the city of Warren, that Samuel Baker Fullerton Jr. is hereby honored for his lifelong devotion to his family, the people he cared for, and the community of Warren adopted this 10th day of April, 2023.
I move that resolution number A679 be adopted.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor of approval, show of hands.
My hand's raised.
Okay, that's five votes in favor. One absent, none opposed. The resolution is adopted. If I might, I want to go ahead and do the next one.
Can we not say something before you go in?
Oh, yes, ma'am, you certainly may.
Just would like to say that we certainly appreciate the service of Mr. Fullerton that he gave to the city of Warren and the community, and he will certainly be missed, and thank you all so much for coming.
Thank you. We're going to get a picture made with everybody, with both of them here as soon as we get the second one adopted. And, okay, get all my stuff straight here. Okay, this would be resolution A681. I know we're kind of doing them in a different order, that's why the numbers are different, but this would be 681. A resolution honoring Tommy Fairfax Fuffa Triplet Fullerton. Whereas Tommy Fairfax Triplet Fullerton was loved by the people of Warren, valued citizen of Warren, Arkansas. Whereas Tommy Fairfax Triplet Fullerton, also was also known as Fuffa to most of her friends and acquaintances. She was a wonderful and loving mother to three children, Samuel Baker Fullerton III and wife Phyllis, Reverend Dr. Fairfax Fullerton, and Arthur Keen Fullerton. Fuffa was married to the love of her life, Samuel Baker Fullerton Jr. for 69 years. And whereas, Fuffa graduated from Miss Porter School of Farmington, Connecticut. She later enrolled at Smith College in North Hampton, Massachusetts before marrying Sam. Whereas after their marriage, Fuffa graduated summa cum laude from the University of Arkansas at Monticello with a four-point GPA. Had no doubt about that. While at the university, Mrs. Fullerton served as volunteer tutor in the writing center and as a charter member and president of Sigma Tau Delta English Scholastic Honor Society. She was also a member of the Journalism Club and a regular contributor to the University Literary Magazine. Mrs. Fullerton was elected to membership in the Alpha Chi Scholastic Honor Society and Who's Who in American Colleges and Universities. Whereas in 1999, Mrs. Fullerton earned a Juris Doctor with honors. She was Articles Editor of the UALR Law Review and active in the pro bono legal clinic. Whereas in 1986, Fuffa was elected to the Warren City Council as an independent candidate. There she served 30 years as an alderman and represented her constituents with zealous passion. Mrs. Fullerton served on the police committee, she was an active member in the Arkansas Municipal League, and served on numerous committees. Upon her retirement in 2016, she was awarded lifetime membership in the Municipal League in recognition of her service to good government. Whereas Fuffa was a member of First Presbyterian Church, where she served as a youth sponsor, vacation Bible school teacher and director, circle chairman, and president of Presbyterian Women. Fuffa was also past president and life member of the Warren Junior Auxiliary and Publicity Chairman of the National Association of Junior Auxiliaries. Past chairman and board member of the Warren YMCA, membership chairman and board member of the Warren Library, board member of Verlooy Presbyterian Family Services, member of the Alumni Board of the UALR Law School, board member of the Verlooy Presbyterian Family Services, member of the alum, I'm sorry, I got offline and read it twice. And then the UALR Law School, member and past president of the Junior Sesame Club of Pine and Bluff, secretary and board member of the National Society of Colonial Dames of America in the state of Arkansas, surety of the state of Arkansas for the National Society of the Daughters of the Barrens of Rumadine. Am I saying that correctly?
Running me.
I'm sorry?
Running me.
Running me, okay, I'm sorry. Member of the First Families of Virginia, the descendants of colonial governors, and the Order of the Crown in America. That's just what she did in her part time, for everybody to understand. Be it resolved by the city of Warren, that Tommy Fairfax Fuffa Triplet Fullerton is hereby honored for her lifelong devotion to her family, the people she cared for, and the community of Warren.
I move that we adopt resolution number A681.
Second. Motion's made and seconded, that A681 be approved, adopted. Question or discussion?
Discussion.
Yes, sir.
You know, I stayed two blocks from Ms. Fullerton, and upon her approaching me about running for city council, you know, I just questioned her judgment of asking me to even do something like that. But it was just the way that she handled me, she never raised her voice, and she instilled a confidence in me that I could do it. And upon all those years sharing this, this table right here with her, it was something that just always stuck out to me. That little lead pencil that she always wrote with me. I never seen her with a brand-new pencil, you know, and that little old pencil and all the information that she served and gave to me with that little pencil to guide me through this and to make a council member out of me today, you know. I'm cheering for that now for the community of Warren, for people to be steadfast and be knowledgeable and also be a leader at the same time without looking down and scarring you.
That's right.
And I think that's what made this community what it is today, and I just wanted to say I was proud to be able to sit right here with her, and it was one of the most enjoyable moments in my life, and I want to thank the family for that opportunity.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
And I would like to share that Mrs. Fullerton was my mentor when I came on board and went to my first municipal league meeting. She introduced me to the first, Mr. Zimmerman, and I ended up serving on the advisory council because of her, and then later became vice president of the Arkansas Municipal League. She always shared in a positive way. Anytime that there was an article about any of us, she sent us that article with a nice card, commendations, and we were so proud when she decided she was going to go back to school, that we loved her so much that we changed our council meeting to accommodate her travels, her commute to Little Rock, because she drove up every day, and she was a dear, dear friend. Thank you.
One more thing, though, I will remember, she's calling me one time when I was the chamber director.
She never got on me.
And I asked her to use her car for Republicans to ride in the parade.
Other comments from any council member? Obviously, I think everybody can, can read from, we voted, we voted, or did we not?
You made the most...
We got the motion, let's vote.
And now we're on discussion.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor of approving the resolution, Ms. Fullerton, hands raised?
Hand is raised.
Hand is raised, number five, so that's five votes in favor. I was just going to say briefly that obviously you could just listen to all of the accomplishments of both of those resolutions, and you will not only see lives well-lived and people served and helped, but a tremendous amount of contribution to this community. A lot of those things we talked about Mr. Sam doing, you know, he donated work and labor and equipment for building a lot of public facilities there, as well as all the other things he took part in, and then of course, Ms. Fullerton was, I don't think I would be a short and saying, probably his hard work, hardest-working council member that probably was, was probably every council, nothing against any of y'all, but she just was. She, she was that kind of, kind of person, and so we're very grateful. I'm going to ask the family if y'all would step up here and, and we're going to get any council members who want to get your picture made. I'm going to step down here with you, if that's all right. We will get y'all a permanent sand copy of this, so we can get them all executed and everything. Get them set by a glass, stand by a glass, like two here or something.
Three, two, one.
I got one more. Thank y'all, thank you so much.
Appreciate you.
Appreciate you.
Father and mother.
So blessed.
No, thank you.
Yeah, y'all want to say anything, any of you want to make any comment?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm all right.
I can too.
I have a biker trailer.
Y'all take care. Major. Thank you, sir. Take care.
I'd like to say one thing to y'all. Both mom and dad loved the city of Warren. They loved the people, they loved the community, they enjoyed helping people, and they taught us right from wrong and really did a wonderful job of that. And thank y'all so much, because I know how long that little pencil flies. Sometimes it's a little sharp.
Yeah, and I'd just say thank you so much for honoring them, because we appreciate y'all knowing that they were awesome and...
Amen.
Missing them with us and celebrating them with us, so thank you so much.
Thank y'all, and I, I really appreciate all y'all for your public service and for being willing to step forward and, and continue what they did in public service, because if we don't have good people step forward and participate, we can't have good government. So I appreciate all of y'all for what you're continuing to do and keep that legacy alive. Thank y'all. Thank y'all so much. Appreciate you. Okay, we have one more here to do, a gentleman that I know many people here will know. It's a resolution of 680. It's a resolution honoring Donald Howard Whittemore, and I think most everybody's going to say Coach Whittemore. It just, it just goes together, I'm sorry, it just does, for so many of us. I'll go ahead and read the resolution again, this is A680. Whereas Donald Howard Whittemore was loved by the people of Warren, valued citizen of Warren, Arkansas. Whereas Donald Howard Whittemore, also known as Coach Whittemore, was a wonderful and loving father to five sons, John Douglas, Ashley, Joe David, Taylor, Robert, Meredith, Daniel, Haley, and Nick. He was married to his loving wife Cecilia of 40 years, whereas Coach Whittemore graduated from Harding University. He began his career as a coach and teacher in Brinkley, Arkansas. He was later hired as coach and teacher with Warren School District and served 36 years in that capacity. During his coaching career, Coach Whittemore won 151 games, seven conference championships, and a co-conference championship. Whereas Coach Whittemore coached the Warren Junior Jack Football Team, he also coached junior and senior high girls' basketball, track and field, JV baseball, and was assistant baseball coach and assistant lumberjack football coach until he retired in 2016. Whereas Coach Whittemore was an active member of the First Baptist Church, where he served as a member of the Food Bank, he was also a member of the Scottish Rite of Freemasonry. Be it resolved by the city of Warren, that Donald Howard Whittemore is hereby honored for a lifelong devotion to his family, the people he cared for, and the community of Warren.
I want to make the motion that we adopt resolution number A680.
Second.
Motion seconded, now any, any comments?
I would like to make a comment, goes back to what I said about Ms. Fullerton. Out of all the years Coach Whittemore was there, if you just look back at the young men that came through him first, I often say he, he's the reason why Bo Emery is Bo Emery, because, you know, it was just a joy to see a no-nonsense person like him deal with young men and scold them and give them off to a great start, and just having my son be a member of that group is just gives me a little special place in my heart to him. And then also, I always referred to him as being a great recruiter, because a man that would have had his wife if it had not been for him, being such a great recruiter. And it, it was just a, a great feeling to go out of the state and see folks from Brinkley, and they always asked about it. You know, when you, when you go back to the place you come from and folks still hold you in eye and esteem, you know something's right, and I just want to appreciate her for coming to Warren instead, so I mean, we had him for the duration, and I just want to appreciate the family.
Anyone else make any comments? I could probably go on for a long time, if I want to say something, but I, we do just miss him, already miss him, but he was, you know, it seems like there's just people that get into the coaching field and they're just coaches. It doesn't make any difference what they're coaching, they're good at. And he was one of those people, plus he was, he knew how to, how to deal with young people and, and how to teach them and be successful with them, and like Alderman Tolfree, my son came up and had the privilege to play under him, and we just thought the world of him, and he left, has left a legacy at Warren schools, but in the community of Warren that will last forever. Cecilia, we, again, we appreciate you, we know you served a lot of years over there, fantastic teacher, and just appreciate all of you, the whole family. Okay, anybody else before we vote? This is A680, and the motion's made and seconded, correct? To adopt or approve? All in favor, show of hands.
My hand's raised.
Thank you, ma'am. That's five in favor, one absent, so the resolution is adopted, and if you would ask y'all, did you and Dave, John come up? And this is one of Coach Whittemore's sons, I think his oldest son, correct?
Yes.
We will get y'all a signed copy of this. Can't put the seal on it till we approve it, so. Can't put the seal on it till we approve it, so. Y'all wanna say anything? You're welcome to, but you don't.
Just thank you so much. You've been a lot to me.
He was a good man. Left, left a tremendous legacy in this.
You love this place.
Want some lumberjack always.
Appreciate y'all.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Alright, appreciate everybody. Uh, those were important. They were important. These are people that, uh, contribute a lot to this community. Alright, the next thing we have on the agenda, getting kind of back to our regular business here. We've got a letter from the Pink Tomato Festival. Uh, I'm not sure I'm in the right place here. Item four, under, uh, under number six on your agenda. This is the request to close streets as laid out in the letter during the tomato festival.
The motion to close the streets was submitted by the Pink Tomato Festival.
Second.
A motion's made and seconded. Is there any question or any discussion? This is pretty routine.
The police department have already looked at this, I'm, I'm assuming.
Yes, ma'am. Alright, all in favor of the motion, please show hands.
Hand is raised.
Alright, five in favor and still, uh, one absent. And then, uh, the, the memorandum of understanding with the water sewer department. This, of course, concerns the old shop building down there that we've been talking about for a few months and trying to go back and forth with the lawyers on putting a suitable memo of understanding together for, of course, y'all know, y'all know what this is all about, uh, to, uh, not give up ownership of the building, but to allow the water sewer, uh, department to use it, uh, making sure there's a way for us to cancel the agreement. But there's some discussion about they're gonna have to spend some money on it to, to make it usable. And we just felt like in, in further discussions that the best thing to do right now is to sign our Community and Economic Development Committee and, uh, have them meet with the commission.
That the community, that this item, number five, be referred to the Community and Economic Development Committee and that we meet at the site of the building.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Any question or discussion?
Discussion.
Yes, sir.
You know, down through the past, I think sometimes we, we hadn't really come out good on these deals. You know, I, I'm still kinda got a spot in my heart about the industrial park. When we, uh, went out there and supported what they brought to us and told us that we really needed that building to be able to promote, uh, industrial development and, and, and we lost on that deal. And, uh, when we did the co-op out there, when we went and we built that access road and we did all the things that we did in to promote that. I just wish that, uh, I'm glad that we're gonna send this to the Community and Economic Development Committee to think it out. Because, uh, sometimes when you go to dealing with, uh, buildings, things change. And I just wanna hope we go into this building to do the best thing for the citizens.
Alright.
Call for the vote.
All in favor of the motion to send the committee, show of hands?
Hand is raised.
Five votes in favor, still one, uh, absentee. And, uh, item six, under, uh, Mayor's report, is another matter that I'd like to send this into the Ways and Means Committee. You have, I believe, a letter in your, uh, packet from the, uh, or memo, uh, to me and the council from the city clerk and, uh, this needs to be talked about by the committee.
I make a motion we refer this matter to the Ways and Means Committee.
A second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Refer to Ways and Means Committee. It's a personnel matter, yes.
I would like, when you call for the discussion, make a comment.
Okay, what's appropriate? Go ahead.
Um, the Ways and Means Committee met on eight different occasions and we looked at each position with each department to include the administration. And I just want that to be, uh, noted in the, in the minutes. But we more than happily will go and, uh, reexamine this particular one.
Thank you. Alright, uh, anybody else? Motion's sent to the committee. All those in favor, show of hands?
Hand is raised.
Okay. You're getting good at this, Alderman. Alright, that's five in favor with still, uh, one absent. Okay, that'll bring us to public comments. Uh, we have no one listed on, for the aldermen are concerned, but we do have some people signed up.
Well, I, I have, uh, a recognition if Mr. Oshie wanted to come forward, but she ain't been signed up.
Let me appropriate. Well, if you can just come up here a little ways if you want to, where they hear you good and.
So we can see her too.
Yeah, but once you come up, step behind the podium there and they, they can see you a little easier. You would state your name and where you live, just for the record and make your comments.
Good evening. My name is Oshie Porter. I live at six one six McCauley Street. And I'm here this afternoon because there's a couple of properties that really need looking at. The property, uh, next door to me is south of my property. I've been calling over the years for them to come and, you know, clean it up and a couple of times they did, but it hasn't been cleaned even before the, uh, pandemic. It hadn't been cleaned in a long time. And I used to just wear this landed to death right here because she's the one, you know, that I would be talking to. But now it's not only grow, has grown up really bad. But there's a tree during this last storm, or one of the storms, there's a tree and I didn't blow it over, so I don't know what you're gonna do there. But it's a mess. And that's it's right next door to me. And I was going to bring this to Alderman where he could go and look at it and then he can bring it back and let you all know what. Because I think, right now, it needs more than that. In the past, Mr. Harris, he had been going, coming over there mooring around it because, you know, he got grandchildren. And then I would go and have somebody to cut the outside of my fence where I put spray and everything to kind of keep, you know. But that property has always been a problem there. And also there's a property at the corner of Pearson and Carr. And Valerie Harris, she had been down here and stated that that property needed cleaning. So since I was coming and know it, and I brought that too. So I really can't tell you what that property means either because it's so grown up now. When it was first stated that it needed cleaning, it wasn't that bad, but nobody come out and did anything and now it's out of hand. So these two properties here really need to be looked at. And then you all can decide what you're gonna do with them because it's a huge tree over there now and then now. So, and I don't even know who the property belonged to. It's been there, I've been there for fourteen years and I've been having trouble with that same property. Not only is the property right behind me, we even talked about that.
Yes, ma'am.
So, yeah. So I'm trying to get my neighborhood cleared up.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll, uh, we'll take your information.
Has she actually turned in? Has this been turned in?
This is the first one, I think.
No, I, no.
So you, you haven't called?
No.
Okay.
I just, I bet I got my notes right there for my alderman.
Okay.
You know, so he can go out and look at it and he can bring you all back. And then I won't have to run out here, you know what I'm saying?
Thank you, ma'am.
I give it to him, let him do it.
Let him do the running.
Yeah, he's out of God, you know what I'm saying?
Alright, we've got, uh, two people that have signed up since they've been here tonight to speak. Uh, the first one is Ms. Terry White with the Chamber of Commerce. She wants to make a comment. Ms. Terry, if you'd come forward. I think they know you, but.
Yeah.
And, uh.
Mine real quick and simple.
Okay.
Uh, we start the Market on Main, Bombers Market, uh, this coming Saturday. And we just needed permission from the council to close Cypress Street, just the length of Martin, uh, the Martin's Lot because we're gonna have four food trucks there.
Did we get a letter to their?
This is, this is the first we've contacted.
It'll only be for like a few hours.
And it'll be. Closing where?
Cypress Street, just the length of Martin. It won't be, uh, cutting traffic from the Eagle Democrat or Marshes Pastime or Snowbird Fashions.
Be from Main Street, running west
On Cypress.
to the end of the, what we call the old Martin's Lot.
Yeah.
Can I chief here to see if there would be a problem with that closure?
It's the same one? Yeah. Chief. Yeah, it's the same one. We have to close every time because food trucks and we don't want, the kids are running back and forth from mama to the food trucks. And it's just better than the truck that we're there.
Would there be a problem with that closure?
Did you hear what she said? Okay, the request is coming from the, uh, I guess the Chamber, the Market on Main group. They're planning to have some activities there this coming Saturday and they're wanting to close off Cypress Street from the Main Street corner down to the Eagle Democrat or close to it there.
Just the length of the Martin's Lot.
Well, ma'am, I would say, you know, we're adapting the city council to talk. That's what they're gonna do with it.
You don't see any serious problems with doing that for just a few. Half the day or something. Alright, council members, I know this is not on your agenda, but you certainly got to write if you wish to, to take action on it. We had not received any requests until tonight, so that's why you didn't have it there.
Since the chief doesn't have, uh, an, an issue of seeing that there would be an issue with the closure. Uh, in the future, if you don't mind, if you'll send it in print so that we can look at it part two and make sure that it runs by. But I move that we approve. Second.
Alright, well, it'll be held the third Saturday of every month throughout the summer.
So you'll want it every time?
Every time they have Market on Main there, yes.
Okay. And that's why we needed it in print because we're visual people.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll get that for you.
Is that your motion?
I'm, I'm, uh, my motion is for this particular time, this particular.
Alright, then we had to come back and talk about it further, okay?
Yes, forever, yes.
Is that okay, second? We're all clear on the motion? Okay. Council members, you, I think y'all hear what's going on, so any question or discussion?
Are we making the motion just for this Saturday?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. They'll come back to you if they wanna make any further requests. Okay.
In, in writing?
Yes, ma'am. All in favor, show of hands?
Hand is raised.
Okay, I see five in favor, so and, uh, one, one, the.
I, thank you, ma'am.
Absent.
And y'all come support.
Now, Mr. Dominic?
Yes, sir.
You are up. Come on down here.
Black.
Introduce yourself and, uh, where you live and everything, if you don't mind doing that for the record.
Archie Dominic, nine oh one Glover Street. I would like to know if there's any updates on the repayment of Glover Street?
Would you, the, the, um, Alderman supposedly chairman of the street committee, so I'm gonna let her answer that.
We're looking at streets now. We're trying to get measurements. We've got their measurements before we can do anything, so. And I did not bring my list and I cannot, I can't remember.
We addressed it in the meeting, if not being paid to, to look at the trouble spot that he brought to us.
Oh, okay, yeah. We've looked at so many different. But maybe not the whole street, but some of the bad places on the street. We've just gotta see how far our money's coming down.
They have not finalized this yet, so actually answered to your question. They're in the process of trying to get that finalized, so.
So did, did history come up in, in your meeting?
Yeah, cause he came to boss his thing and then we put the note in that he had came and talked about.
So it's still in discussion?
Yeah.
What you're saying, okay.
Also, um, Glover Street and Rock Street, Pearson and Rock Street, there are no stop signs. No stop sign.
We will administratively check on that and see what's going on.
Like stolen or does it ever happen?
As if one were, somebody ran.
Ran over it?
Not too bad.
And there's not one at all on Pearson and Rock Street.
We will check that out before we get, we, that, that don't require any action. That would need to be taken care of. We'll take care of that.
Oh, okay.
I'll, I'll check on that. I wasn't aware of it, but we'll, we'll check.
Will the city eventually go around and like stand all the stop signs up? There's.
Yes, sir. We're exactly working on that right now. We are trying to do a citywide street by street. Of course, that's gonna take a while, uh, I just, so I appreciate you calling after our attention. We can, you know, go ahead and get on those. But, uh, I will just tell, a lot of people don't know this. I saw somebody the other day. We have close to one hundred miles of city street within the city limits of Warren. And that's everything from alleys to, you know, small streets to all, but we got almost a hundred miles. And we are literally implementing a program of trying to go through street by street. Uh, and, and not only just fixed signs and things like that, but you know, we're drainage works needed and ditch works needed and curb and gutters need to be cleaned and just all kinds of issues like that. And we are working on that, but we'll check on those. Yes, sir. Glad you brought that up. That's a good point.
Go away.
Alright, that's all I had on the list. So we will proceed. Police chief, I think you're next. And I know you've got a monthly report and I want you to make them aware of, uh, new hire. Okay, but you might wanna mention, mention it too.
Okay, if you look in the personnel section, you know, second paragraph, about new hire, uh, Alexander Carlos. I think it was on the, uh, twenty seventh of March, City Service Commissioner Matt. And we had hired him individual. He's not certified. He's scheduled to go to ILEDA on the thirtieth of this month, thirteen weeks straight.
So when do we get a chance to meet this person?
We might wanna wait till after he, uh, complete the, the training to make sure that he's gonna.
Stay?
Stay, yes, ma'am. Normally it's after that. Maybe after graduation, the first city councilman after graduation. But he will not be working the streets until after, you know, because he's been in the training. And the process was going exam process and getting paperwork done, this was the main question.
Chief, you might just, uh, and some of them may know this, but that's a thirteen week course, is it not?
Yes, ma'am, I mentioned that just.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Uh, beginning on thirtieth of this month. So we're looking at the graduation date, uh, um, I think it was like mid-July, uh, July seventeenth. And also we did, like I said, last month, month before, we did make another hire Jonathan Cox, who will also be starting at ILEDA on the thirtieth of March. I'm sorry, April of this year. So that'll be two, that will be seven to the calendar right now.
Alright, any questions for the chief?
No, but your employees are making extra money right now overtime.
Yes, ma'am.
It's going to cease.
Ma'am, we, we are, we are working them quite a bit. Uh, hopefully we can give them some relief because although with the overtime, they're getting, they're working a lot of hours. So we can't get strenuous and, and they get, get kind of worn down. So although they're making the money, we're, we're kinda, we're kinda trying to keep them pepped up and and let it go to work. So, but I guess, uh, the overtime is an issue right now, but, um, before the hours.
Anybody else? Any questions or comments for, for the chief? Police committee?
Yeah, ready to put the other one off, so I'm not gonna say.
We didn't, we didn't make, we don't have anything.
Alright, thank you, ma'am. Alright. Anything else? We'll let the chief step back out.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Fire chief, Chief Moore. Ian, I think they've got your report there.
Yes, sir, you can get our report. Uh, Warren, five cars here from the eleven calls during the month of March with one timeout. Uh, had our meeting on March the sixth with eighteen members present and volunteer favorable for the month of seven fifty-five. Uh, during our meeting, we mainly discussed some previous calls and then we placed some new supplies on the little ladder truck. And other than that, it's been kind of a little bit, well, thank goodness.
Questions for the fire chief? Alright, Mr. Tollfree, you've got a little bit of business on your committee, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. While the Warren City Council Fire Committee met on April the fifth, two thousand and twenty-three at five P M. As y'all very well know, if you've been following us very closely, we've had some concerns about policies and procedures with the fire department as well as with the, the voluntary end of it. And we've been working on this now for about a year and a half. And so, uh, as the administration and fire chief and the fire committee met, we come to the final drafting of, uh, one. we come to the final drafting of, uh, one, two, three, four parts that we went over. And we're gonna go over them individually. And, uh, I will, might add that each part that we went to was a due pass from the committee. So we brought it to the overall committee as well as the same time for the public to hear all the things we made. I just would like everybody to keep in mind, the Warren Fire Department benefits everyone. Even outside the city limits, it benefits everyone. And if you own any type property, you very well have noticed that your insurance is affected by the performance of a fire department. So doing through the great performance of our city council funding the fire department and the fire department carrying out their procedures and the new equipment, the insurances have went down because we're one of the highest rating, S O ratings that we have. And it's a benefit of the city working for you enough, if you remember years ago that the public instructed us to look at the fire to cover some of that tax that you voted for us and steal. So you're reaping the benefits, so to speak, out of the vote that you put in confidence with us. And first, we're gonna touch the Warren Fire Department live fire training policy. The property will be visually inspected by the fire chief, and I want y'all to keep in mind, the fire chief is solely responsible for these sites. He's supposed to go out, check them, prep them, and get his team together even when he's not there. He's gonna do that to ensure the safety of the individuals as well as the properties for that. And, uh, we're gonna, I'm just gonna go down through it. Y'all have it in your packet. Um, thank you. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, well, one, the property will be visually inspected by the fire chief. Number two, limited factors would be a priority adjacent to the factors. And I wanna also keep in mind that the chief also has come to us and told us that all these things will be looked at and everything that the committee brought to his attention that they were concerned about would be looked at. Three, is there sufficient water supply? Four, what effect will it, uh, weather have on it? Five, once it is determined that the acquired structure can be safely burned. And y'all can go over that, and like I said, we'll ask the motion for a due pass from the council on that first one, on the Warren Fire Department live fire training. That's when the fire department comes out and burns down structures for training purposes.
You wanna elaborate on proximity?
Proximity to other, yes, he's gonna, like you said, it's different. Structures have different challenges. And depending on what the house or building is made out of, whether it's siding, brick, wood, and the whole nine, that he will make that determination for about the spacing of it. You wanna elaborate on the chief?
Well, yes, sir, that's what I was explaining to the committee, you know, if you've got a brick house on each side, it's easier to protect a brick house from the fire, we, from the home, where a building we may be burning. It's got a bound side, knowing the proprietary distance will, you can't just, one side's not gonna fit all as far as putting a distance on it, it'll determine the, the, the construction of the surrounding buildings will have a determination on how we proceed.
You were doing yours in the form of a motion, so I'll second your motion.
Okay, the motion and a second. This is the Warren Fire Department Live Fire Training Policy. We'd be part of the, uh, operating manual of the fire department. And it's just, it's just to be clear to the public and to everybody here, Alden and, uh, Tollfree, uh, did mention it, but what we're talking about here is, uh, structures that the owners allow us or ask us to burn down, to clean up. They're usually structures that are not in good shape and, you know, it's gonna cost a lot to remove them or tear them down. And then the fire department does that in return for being able to use it as training for our firemen. We have to go through monthly and extensive training for all of our, uh, full-time and volunteer firemen, and that's what we use these. Uh, we don't do this every day, but it does come up occasionally. Question or discussion on the motion to approve? All those in favor, show of hands?
In raise.
Okay, five in favor and still got one absent. That is approved. Carry on.
Uh, next, we have Warren Fire Department Station Coverage Policy. You know, I think oh too many times are we take for granted on policies. So we asked the chief to spell out exactly what we needed, what we're gonna have, and in what situation it was gonna cover. First of all, it's radication. You know, uh, the fire department, we have brought our specialized equipment for the safety of our people to perform this procedure. And, uh, when the Warren Radication Team is dispatched to call outside the city limits, the on-duty firefighter will respond to the call in the rescue truck. The fire chief along with four designated members of the radication team will respond to station, one for station coverage until the rescue truck returns from the call. That's spelled out, even down to the personnel. And then, uh, secondly, on the, on the same thing, we have a mutual aid fire assistance call outside the city limits. Both of them, I think sometimes it was questioned not only with the council, but with also the, uh, public and the mayor on what we needed in those situations specifically had those spelled out. Cause I want you to just keep in mind, each and every one of these points of interest, it may be a loss of life that we could prevent if we perform our duties the way we're supposed to perform, the way the firemen are, are trained. And the mutual aid fire system call outside the city limits, when the Warren Fire Department is dispatched on a mutual aid call for assistance outside the city limits, the only duty firefighter will remain at the station to cover the city. So we're not gonna leave the city unprotected when we go outside the city limits to assist. Apparatus or equipment that may be needed will be driven to the scene by a volunteer fire, firefighter. The ranking officer in charge at the time of this call shall be responsible for dividing the, the department into companies so as to leave appropriate personnel within the city to respond to any additional calls. So we're gonna have a blanket coverage no matter what we're doing at that time. And at that time, I would like to present that as a motion for the overall council to accept.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded. Uh, Alden Henderson, pay the second. Uh, this is on the, uh, station coverage policy. Question or discussion? Okay, all those in favor, show of hands?
Hands raised.
Five in favor, one absent. That's approved. Next, Mr. Tollfree.
Last, but certainly not the least, another thing that we had been concerned about, that we had, had people to come to us that they was concerned about, and also when the mayor come aboard, he was, uh, gonna be looking at it, and even before he came, uh, he'd asked me courses about the same thing. And the topic would be leaving the fire station while on duty, but in a non-emergency. The ones I just stated was an emergency situation, and this is non-emergency. And it's kinda linked to the way the chief administrations that had laid it out, but I'll just read you the first, uh, bullet point. When out of the station on non-emergency activities, the first out engine, number six, should be taken. We specify, if you were up, go down past the fire station, you know we have more than one engine. So we've been real specific about which engine can be taken upon which circumstances. So again, so this could be clear and be followed to. And the chief has assured us that we were gonna follow these policies and procedures to the letter that we have been stating to you. And then it should be taken always ensure that it is parked so it can respond immediately. If there is a qualified firefighter at the station, the rescue truck may be used. So you know, you, sometimes I guess when you're going through things in your head, but you don't necessarily follow out through procedure, the little things can trip you up. So if somebody drove to the fire station and blocked this specific engine, then all this will be phenomenal. So we've even looked at that to make sure that it would have access to make answer a call at all times. And like I said, we went through and the councilman has all the procedures that we're gonna go through and through. Just the same time, I would like to make in the form of a motion that we also.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion.
Do I just, do I, can we discuss it now?
Oh, yes. We got, got a motion, second. This is on the, uh, non-emergency.
Right, so you know what?
You're recognized.
The mayor knows what happens Fri- Friday, and you probably know. But I called the fi- the police station to get a burning permit, and they said, no, you, fire department. They transferred me to the fire department. No answer. So it's not being followed, or communication is still not there between the firemen and the dispatch.
I, I think that was a communication issue internally, and we are gonna address that.
I just wanted, I just wanted everybody to be aware that it's not, people say, well, it must not happen to you or something's been done. Well, guess what? It happens, and, I mean, I just wanted everybody to be aware.
I, I think the policy actually was being followed because I, uh, you got me off on my day off to check it out. I'm just, I'm just being funny, but I did. And, uh, they were in the fire engine appropriately and all that. The trouble with that's a little miscommunication between the dispatch and, uh, we got to make sure that.
Right, it was just a, it was just a fire pu- um, permit, permit, but, and I know if it had been a fire, I would've called nine one one and there wouldn't have been a problem. But if you're transferred, there needs to be some.
You want somebody to answer the telephone or tell you. I understand.
Or even if the dispatch would've said, they're not in the station, let me take your name, they'll call you back, no big deal. But the miscommunication makes it look like there's bigger problems than what it actually is.
Good valid point.
Well, yeah, and let me just say this, most of the time, we try to tell the dispatcher, first thing in the morning, either we can burn today or we're not gonna burn today. So in your case, if you had called up there, had, had they known the guy was out of the station and you could've said, can I burn, the dispatcher could've said, give me your permit number, yes, we're burning today. We do do that, but like I said, I don't know. I'll have to find out what was. But like I said, this, once we get this passed, like I said, we've been trying to implement some of it before y'all we brought this to you, so once we can get this passed, yes, we'll, hopefully most of those problems will be taken care of.
There's a lot involved in these things.
Yes, it has. I've come to find that out going through.
We're trying to, we're trying to plug our holes where we find some and, uh, make corrections and, and, uh, emergency services is vital. We gotta make sure we communicate and everybody gets where they need to be.
One more thing, and I think sometimes, uh, we overlook it and it would help the chief as well as, uh, administration. Alden Burke alluded to it. She called to submit her permit number. Cause all the times you get ready to burn, the conditions are not conducive to that. So, uh, I want everybody to know, and I wish we keep getting that out there, that everybody needs a permit number. You need to call before you do your prescribed burn to get permission. Having the permit doesn't always give you the right to burn. So I just wish everybody would wanna take that into consideration because it could be the neighbor, your neighbor's life that you save just following those procedures. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Call for the vote.
All right. Ready to vote? All in favor of adopting this policy? Show of hands?
Hands raised.
Five votes in favor and one absent. And again, I wanna, I know we got one more item here, but I particularly wanna thank the committee as well as the full council. Worked hard on this. They, they spent time, committee going through all this. The chief, of course, uh, deeply involved, he put all the original drafts together, consulted with the volunteer, uh, advisory, uh, council, the volunteer firemen. So a lot of people had their fingerprints on all this trying to come up with a workable and a proper policy. So I appreciate everybody that, that worked on it and the council's action. Out of five, Mr. Tollfree?
Out of five. Before I get started here, I, I guess too many times we don't, we don't know about it. But the Warren Fire Department has a volunteer on with it also. And they're a very important part to help supporting our fire department. Because if you very well know that the staff alone could not do the things we do to ensure the safety of the whole community. And I think sometimes their contribution has been overlooked. And then, uh, by no means am I saying through this that there are being fully compensated to the best around that we think they should be, but to the best that the city could do to manage the money that we have alone with recognizing the contribution that they are giving us. The Warren, uh, Fire Department office, we did a pay raise for our volunteers. And, uh, I'll read this to you. Currently, the Warren firefighters, uh, receive fifteen dollars per call out. Fifteen dollars, which is not very much, and it's been that away for quite some time.
As far as to that, it was ten dollars.
Yes. And, uh, some of, of our patrons wouldn't cross the street for that much money, let alone go and try to pull somebody out of a burning house. And I'm proposing that we raise the three captains' pay to twenty-five dollars per call, the three lieutenants' pay to twenty dollars per call, and this would cost just approximately on an average. And Alden Henderson put a pencil to it, so to speak.
So you're not gonna go with the forty and the?
With the forty?
Yeah, forty.
Oh, well, that's the wrong one. My bad.
You got the wrong one.
Yeah, I didn't get that one.
I penciled that one.
All right, well, I blew off my notebook. Yeah, I don't wanna go through that again. Well, the captains will get forty and lieutenants will get thirty.
Second.
Okay. I think we went back and, yeah, we got, there's some copies in there. It's got the right amounts. I'm sorry about that, Mr. Tollfree. We ended up with some old documents in there and then we got the other one. So the motion's made, seconded. What you're doing is you're raising the, uh, for volunteer firemen and those that respond to the calls. For the captains, the leadership of the department, forty dollars, for the three lieutenants, thirty dollars. Everybody else continue to receive, uh, what they currently do.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Question, discussion on the motion?
Well, I, I just wanna go back and add that, uh, I wanna thank the committee members for going through this and being thoughtful and then also being cognizant of, of your money and what you all had voted in the tax to take care of. And, uh, this money wasn't given out lightly. It was given out for added responsibilities that the captains and lieutenants take on. And I might add that when it was first presented to the committee, it was lower than what we finally agreed on. And that, after careful reasoning, thought, and figuring, like I said, we come up with more than what they come up with. It ain't always that we come up with more than what they ask. But the committee felt like it was the just thing to do. And I just wanna appreciate, first of all, their diligence and work because they put a lot into this. There's a lot of thought, and I think they had the sincerity in mind when they made this. And I just wanna appreciate them for their work and also for having in their mind, not partisan, but just the right thing to do.
You may wanna mention the fact that if the chief is out, uh, those three captains would be filling in and, and of course, the assistant chief is out, so.
Mike said for added responsibility, that's what it was given for. It wouldn't just, committee woke up and decided to give some money away.
Other questions or discussion?
Call for the vote.
All in favor of the motion? Show of hands?
Hands raised.
Five votes in favor, one absent. So thank you very much. Committee, Mr. Tollfree, thank y'all. Chief, thank you.
And I, I thank y'all and, and, uh, me and him certainly thank you.
All right.
That concludes our bid.
Thank you, sir. Sanitation manager, Mr. Johnson.
Good evening.
Got anything you need to?
Uh, the, uh, the container truck that we've got on order will be here in about two weeks, uh, the one we leased for, uh, because one of our other trucks broke down, also broke down. Uh, now we were out of trucks and for the last eight days, the crew had pulled dumpsters by hand. And it's.
This the red dumpsters. Make sure everybody know what we're talking about, the commercial dumpsters.
Been a real challenge, uh, for them, and, uh, but everybody stepped up and, uh, the only day we missed in the last eight days is Easter. We did not work on Easter. the only day we missed in the last eight days is Easter, we did not work on Easter, but everybody works Saturday. And, uh, we're, we're actually doing better than, than I thought we would do, as far as being able to keep up. Some of the, uh, some of the customers have helped out, uh, some of the mills have started hauling their own stuff for us, through the transfer station, to, to help us out, cause they understand, of course, there's always a few out there that don't understand. But we're, we're trying to do our best, I have no idea when the trucks are gonna be fixed, the, the people that are working on them, I have one in Eldorado, and one here in Warren, and they don't know when they're gonna be fixed, parts and supply chain, and so forth like that, so.
Now, these are commercial dump trucks, the, the, pick up the containers.
Yeah, they did.
Our, our, our residential pickup is continuing.
Doing a hunt.
Okay, where the guys pick up the sacks for everybody, that's. So make sure, I always wanna know, make sure y'all clear on what we're talking about, where we're, where we're having the problems.
But hopefully, we'll get it taken care of as soon as possible, and we ask the public to please bear with us, and if you do have a problem, don't hesitate to call the office, and we'll send a special truck by there to take care of your problem. Uh, but, uh, hopefully by midweek, it'll be headed the other direction, and, uh, that's where we are in the sanitation.
Got any questions?
We're behind on L M's, because we've had for the last, I said, the last eight days, we've had to pull by hand, which is taking all the extra manpower that we have, uh, we'll catch up on it. And, uh, our junk's going pretty good as far as pickup, we were, we were about to catch up on it, but it's back ahead of us again now. But the crew has done an excellent job, every one of them should be committed, if you see them, buy them lunch, they, they doing a good job. And, uh, it's, it's tough, it, it really is, you never, the workers, you've never stood in the back of a pickup and grabbed a bag of trash out of a dumpster, and let it bust open when it's halfway through the truck, you don't have the idea. Uh, you know, when it lands on your pants, and everything else, so they're really, they really are doing a great job, and I'm very proud of everybody.
Well, when I made that comment, you said, that's not what you hear, so you have changed.
When was this?
Uh, about six months ago.
Six months ago, what problem did I say?
Uh, you didn't say, I just said that we, they were good P R for the city, and we never hear complaints on them.
Well, I hear complaints on them all the time, I'm hearing complaints on them now, I'm saying they're doing a good job, Mr. Johnson. They're doing a good job, I can't help with the complaints I get, I get complaints every day.
No, I'm saying, I, I never hear any complaints.
No, but I mean, I do, and I still say that I do.
You're, you're getting complaints about the red dumpsters, not getting complaints.
I, we get complaints about, about everything, I mean, from, they didn't pick my garbage up, they came by here early. I don't put my garbage out till ten thirty, or ten o'clock, every time a prize is right comes up. Why are you doing down this road early, you know, that's the complaints we deal with every day, uh.
But that's not on the performance of the employees.
No, ma'am, the employees have always done great, I've never said they haven't.
And that was my, that was my point.
No, ma'am, they, I.
They're doing a good job, they're doing, they got a tough situation right now with the, with the equipment situation, but that'll be, that'll be solved.
Yeah, you, you know, you can't, the guys have always, and the ladies have always done, done great for everybody. I, I just, uh, some people just don't have patience with them, and they just wake up, you can't please everybody.
Well, let's, let's talk about something else here, that I think the council needs to be aware of, that's the letter we got from the.
Oh, G F M?
Yeah, uh, the, this is, uh, you should have a letter in your pack, if I could maybe make a comment first, Rob, and then we'll, anything you wanna add, be fine. We, this is the company that picks our garbage up out at the transfer station, our people, city employees, we pick all of our own garbage up, we're becoming one of the few towns that do that, most of them are contracting it out to private companies. But we still, you know, pick all our, everything, class one, class four, everything, we do ourselves. The class one garbage all goes out to the Banks Highway, to our transfer station, gets compacted into the bigger containers, and it's picked up by this company that this letter's from. Now, apparently sometime, uh, last year, and I, I can't tell you when, and I got a call the other day from this, uh, Mr. Stumball, who I've known for many, many years, works for him. He said that our contract had expired. The city apparently had an annual contract with these folks, but it had expired, and, but, everybody's just continued operating, the company and the city too, I, you know, nothing's changed. They, they had been fulfilling the contract, we had been fulfilling ours, and just operating on them, on a monthly basis. Well, what's happened now is they're going up on the tonnage. Rob, what are we paying right now?
Sixty-five, slightly sixty-four.
We're paying sixty-five dollars a ton. Every time a ton of garbage is shipped to the landfill, picked up at our transfer station, we pay sixty-five dollars. It's substantial money that we're already paying, they're going up to eighty. Okay, they're going up to eighty. Now, you know, there's not a lot we can do about this right now, they're also wanting a longer term renewing a new contract. Uh, I, first of all, let me just say, without going through this whole thing tonight, I want to put this, not, not the eighty dollars, we have, we have no choice, I mean, they're just, they just won't come pick us up anymore, and then what are we gonna do? Uh, so we, we gotta live with this for right now, but I want the sanitation committee to, in the very near future, sit down, and Rob and I both, we've been talking about this at length, there's a lot of changes coming in this whole solid waste business. It's getting, uh, first of all, more and more and more expensive, just like what we're seeing right here. But there's, uh, just to make it brief, there's a new company that's gonna put in a waste to energy plant near Lake Village, it's about what, Rob, forty something miles from us?
Forty-four.
And, uh, we don't have to use this, but it's part of the Southeast Arkansas Economic Development District, which we're a member of, helped get, it's a private company, but they've helped to get it set up. Here's the bottom line, it's gonna be about two years before that plant's ready, hopefully a little faster, but about two years. But we will be able to haul every piece of garbage that we have over there for forty-five dollars a ton. Once it's built, for like a five-year guaranteed price. And that don't mean it won't ever go up, but it'll give you, and that's how you can already see the difference in that than eighty dollars. Plus, we will get a rebate of some three dollars and some change, which could go back into our fund for use and recycling, and other things that we may need to do, that's part of the contract they negotiated. It's strictly up to the city of Warren what we do, we don't have to use that facility, but about everybody in our part of the state's going to, I can tell you that right now. The big difference is, we gotta get it over there to them, where these folks are now coming to pick us up. So you do have a transportation cost. But I want the committee to start researching this. We got a guy that can come down and brief the committee on the whole, whole thing, how it would work, cause we still, we got a little time here. But to maybe, and we can keep recycling, we don't have, stop recycling materials, whatever we can do affordably, we can do it. But they're gonna recycle this stuff, they're, this gonna be one of those plants where they'll pull the metal out of it, and, uh, you know, anything they can pull out of it, recycle, they're gonna do it. But they gonna get those profits. So, you know, we, if we can recycle aluminum, or, you know, cardboard, like we've been doing, we can still save some money. But we will have to work out the transportation part of getting this stuff over there, but our initial thinking is, Rob feels like that still they put us ahead, and especially with the plans that we now have for our trucks, that be replacing them on a lease basis, so we'll keep good equipment all the time, it can transfer. So I'm, I'm going into more detail than I meant to, but I, this is something the council needs to be aware of.
Could I make a motion that we refer this to the sanitation department besides the contractor, you can just include this?
All right, we're gonna sign it to the sanitation committee, so we can start working on it. Any question or discussion?
Not a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that in the discussion, back to the, the increase from forty-five to eighty?
It was gonna be. No, no, it's from sixty-five to eighty.
For what?
Sixty-five to eighty.
So, are the, are the citizens going to incur that cost, and have we figured out what that cost is gonna be, if, if it's forced to incur?
Well, the citizens will only incur whatever this city council decides, they gotta pay for garbage fees, but I'm not, I'm not proposing right now, as mayor, to increase any garbage fees, cause I wanna, I wanna see if we can cut the cost to the overall system down. Later on, that'd be what your, what some things your committee need to look at. But not immediately, no, ma'am. Any other questions?
Not for me.
Okay, we will get with you, uh, vote, all in favor, show of hands?
In.
Thank you, ma'am, uh, five in favor, one absent. And I apologize for going a little bit more into that, but this is important, everybody knows what's going on, this is a, this is a big deal, and, and, you know, I was just telling y'all, second to law enforcement, garbage is the biggest cost to the city of Warren. Collecting and disposing, so that's just the way it is. Not just for us, by the way, it's for everybody, all cities and counties, but I'm just, just telling you. All right, Mr. Johnson, I hope I didn't.
No.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, overtime rationale, nine thousand, nine seventy-four, ninety-three, quarter.
Yes, ma'am.
She's, I guess she's wanting to know what's driving that.
That's, that's what we need to do, along with the equipment being broke down, uh, uh, which is a lot of it, which I would say probably seventy-five percent of it was gone, uh, and the rest of it is just trying to get caught up. But the majority of it is, is, is just like this weekend, was because I needed six guys on overtime to catch up. And same way with last weekend, I needed six, six, I think seven more last weekend, uh.
So now you're glad you didn't let your person go?
Well, I still haven't gotten, I still, I'm still one choice, I'm, we're doing, yeah, you know, uh, so, you know.
The, the Liam pickup has been a big increase, has it not?
Yes, uh.
You know, we still, we're still trying to clean up from the ice storm. You know, all the stuff that was put out, so, we've had, we've just had a lot.
I know the tree trimmers had a lot of stuff out, and we had some as well.
Yes.
Yeah, they're, they're gradually coming back into town, and, and they're cutting again, and they're also, uh, tipping again.
We're not supposed to be picking any of theirs up, they're supposed to do that.
Yeah, and we're not, and they're not picking up any of ours, and, and, uh, we're, I've talked to them, and worked with them, and, uh, we try to stay out of areas there, and, uh, that's some more phone calls.
It's just unusual for your amount to be almost ten thousand dollars. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Rob, did I cut you off with anything that you need to report?
No, to say, we've been advertising now for almost two months for our employee, we still have not gotten one, so, just.
Is that a C D L?
Yes, it's driving.
Anybody knows anybody with C D L license, looking for work? We got our opening. All right, uh, give me your bill of official board. Now, the committee doesn't have anything, excuse me, the committee doesn't have anything tonight, do they?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We didn't have any, we don't have anything to.
Okay, you will, you will now. All right, just kidding you, all right, go ahead, Rob.
Uh, y'all had the report, uh, so in front of me, on, on what I was done, we did an inspection of what food, and, uh, a file plumbing inspection on the, uh, elementary school. We have not done a file inspection on the elementary school, it's still a little bit off, uh, the plumbing and everything turned out okay. Uh, just a few minor corrections that go out to be done in the kitchen area. Uh, we got several little remodel jobs going on throughout the city, some are getting completed from where they were bought in the past. Uh, we've had one or two issues this month, it's not gonna show up right now here, uh, just basically, uh, doing just normal stuff, we, we removed three vehicles since I last saw y'all, uh, from being on the inoperable list, uh.
I was gonna ask, what street are you on now?
Uh, we're still in A's.
Dang.
Uh, I, I tell you, we're really having a problem, and, and this may be something we need to look into, it's. The ordinance states that I have to send out a registered letter to the, to the owner of the property, not necessarily the owner of the vehicle, it doesn't matter, cause the person that owns the property is responsible for, for their property. Uh, however, these letters that I'm sending out are coming back to me unanswered, uh, whether just because the person there doesn't wanna sign for, which is costing the city just roughly eight dollars or nine dollars a letter. Uh, the next process in getting the person notified is to go to the city attorney, and then they're supposed to do the same process again. Uh, I, that's a, that's a problem, uh, uh, it just, I think there should be a process that's a lot easier than that, whether it may be served, but the way it's written up, it, it, this is the process it goes to. Uh, I, I just, I mean, they'll turn down Mr. Murray's letter, just like they did mine, and then there we are again. Then, then we just keep on doing more and more letters, and, uh, I think we sent out sixteen letters, and I got over half of them back, you know, uh, because people are wise enough, they know what's going on.
Here, here's the bottom line, if it comes from the city, returned, received, requested, they reject it.
You know, I don't know.
And they'll take the, and then they say there hasn't been notified, now that's the bottom line.
I don't know if you couldn't have a representative, two representatives go to a door, have a witness that you did serve a letter, or put a sign in the property with a picture, and it stays there for X amount of number of days, once you've contacted the owner, even if the owner's outside, outside of town, a lot of them are, are outside of, outside of Arkansas. Uh, but I, I don't know, there's, there's a lot of the problem, but it's, it's also the same on lot complaints also.
So let me ask you, like, if there's a house, and the people that own the house are parking their, their vehicles in the next door neighbor's yard, but the house is vacant. So the house that's vacant is responsible for that car, even though you know the person next door owns it?
Yes, yes, the, the ultimately, it goes back to the owner of the property.
So what could be done, and that like if, uh, if you know who's parking their car, uh, the car that won't move, or doesn't crank, on that neigh, on that, on their neighbor's lot of the vacant house? But, you know what I mean, like, you know that car is that person that's in that house daily.
Right, right.
Seems like there needs, I mean, that's another situation to look at as well.
That's a completely different, other situation, we don't, we don't do anything with VIN numbers on the cars, because right now, I don't have to.
Right.
Uh, all I have to do is notify the owner that there's an inoperable car on your property that has to be removed. Now, on the other hand, the way we're doing it is we're calling the record service to get the car free of charge. They get the car, doesn't cost the city anything, the city's not making anything on it, the record company gets the car. Now, the record company has to do a VIN number search, and find the last owner of the car, and they have to be notified before the record company can sell the car. So that, that's, that's not answering your question, but that's just the process, we can just let people know. Uh, so, we've got the easy way, we've got, we find the owner of the property, I send them a letter, say, you got three vehicles on there, well, they belong to my uncle, they belong to my bro, they belong to Sosa, well, they're on your property, you get them off. That's, that's the easy step, you know.
Let, let me buddy it just a minute, I think that solves what you're talking about. Because whoever that car belongs to, or at least the last record of whoever it belonged to, that record service has to contact them.
Yeah, so that would.
So they, they, they've got, probably got ways they can recoup their car, if they're willing to pay for it.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, they, they want to, but, so I think it actually solves that, that problem, I don't think.
The record company obviously does the same thing that the city does, the regular order, the ordinance is written up that the city takes the car, holds it for fourteen days, gives the owner opportunity to get it back, if they don't, then the city sells it, we, we have never done that.
Which I know that, you know, everybody talks about cleaning up Warren, we gotta clean it up. We're trying, but there's so much red tape when you're trying to go on people's property.
There's not as much red tape as there are, are people not willing to do it.
Well, I'm just saying, but if we follow what we have right now, it could take two or three months to even find out, to even get to the point where you can get a record. to even get to the point where you can get a record to take the color. Right?
Well, if you can't, if you can't serve the paper, the person the papers, that's reason I'm, I'm like another avenue saying, hey, we need, Joe won't take this letter, but we need to write Joe the, we need to take it to Joe with the witness having signed it, or at least have it served like, like a normal paper.
Right.
It was served.
Council, if we, if we could, we're, we're getting off into something that's gonna take a committee to talk about and gonna take a bunch of, but, but he's got a legitimate problem. I think that's something we probably need to get some legal advice on, first of all, what other ways do we have to notify people where they can't turn down the, the information? That's, I mean, that's what we're coming down to right here, right now, and, and that's a legitimate issue and we need to figure that out. Yes, feel free.
Sometimes I think we're not using the, the tools that we already have. If we have HOAs, uh, leasing agreements for rental and leased property, sometimes in those contracts, it's already stated that they can't have those on there. So already by law, they already have some binding that we can just go in and get them because it's on the contracts. I know it's like that in Bel Air, I know, nobody, never probably went back to look at that.
There's covenants on them, they have some divisions, several of them which have not historically been particularly, uh, stayed on top of.
But they just go through and do what they got, it, that's kind of thing is on there, even to amount of vehicles that you're liable to have.
Well, I tell you what we'll do, city council, those are legitimate questions, not trying to cut anybody off or anything here, but probably not going solidly tonight, but we will, we will, uh, get with our, uh, city attorney and anybody else we need to and see what other options we've got to, uh, I guess, serve notice, if you will, on, on people when we need to. And, and the properties are more of a problem from that standpoint and the cars are, aren't they Rob?
Well, it, it's been, I mean, I mean, there's both a problem, I mean, but there's, there's two thousand.
But our current ordinance lets us go get the car.
Oh yeah, we don't, we.
Where the trouble we have is starting any process on the grown up lots or dilapidated structures because people won't accept the letter we send them notifying them that they're in violation. So that's, that's something we just gotta work on to figure out, and we may have to in our ordinance. We may have to, we'll see how we can do that. This is a big problem, not trying to make light of it. We, we got, we got places in Warren that people are living that look like junkyards.
Yes, that's right.
And, and I understand some of them, uh, are not high income people, but it don't cost that much cleaning something up. And, uh, and a lot of the stuff could even be sold, I mean, there's all kinds of.
A lot of it's rental property.
Yes ma'am, it is, we have a considerable problem with rental property, yes.
These agreements.
Yes, so Rob, Rob's got his hands full with this, it's not an easy thing, I mean, it, it, uh.
Well, it should be mayor, it, it should be very, uh, I, I don't know what to answer, that's what I'm asking y'all's help for.
Well, I, I think we're.
It should be an easy process, if you got a car in the yard and it's running, it should be removed. Either, I don't know what to answer.
Well.
It should be a lot easier.
We, we gotta do it, we gotta have due process however we do it, but nevertheless, the serving the owners, we gotta make sure that we can do that because people are finding loopholes to beat the system. They're finding loopholes to beat the system. Are y'all ready to proceed on?
Let's go ahead and on ma'am.
Okay, Rob, anything else?
No, I'm good.
Alright, thank you. Uh, we're in the street forum. Good evening. Hello.
Where is it? We're in the process, we're trying to catch a break between the rainstorm, uh, but we are in the process of digging the ditches back out, cleaning gutters, uh, streets and curbs, uh, West Pine, others all around the city. Uh, I had, uh, contacted Arkansas Department of Corrections, I had, uh, approximately thirty inmates down here uh, picking up garbage, uh, we, uh, we, they've done a real good job for us. Uh, I have them scheduled to come back at a later date.
Did we buy them a good lunch?
Yes ma'am.
Did you cook?
I mean, I did not cook, I provided them my lunch. But, uh, like I said, we have them scheduled to come back, uh, do some more, uh, gonna try to get them as, as much as possible, uh, to do something, of course, they got to scatter out all over the state, so it'd be sporadic, but, uh, we're, uh, just patchy pot holding, filling holes, you know? We, uh, I'm getting the measurements on the, uh, the proposal of, uh, the asphalt, to turn over to the street committee. That's just where we stand right now.
Questions for the street foreman? I can promise he's staying busy.
We see them.
He's staying busy, just like Rob's bunch are, they're, they're all working.
They're doing good jobs, that's a good part.
Rain or shine, so hot or cold.
What's going on, uh, west of the, uh, the church down here on Pine Street in Town Branch?
That is a, uh, issue with a silver project.
They had to remove some trees.
Had to remove.
That's first thing, we had to get some trees removed, but the water and sewer department's doing some major repairs on silver land as well.
Yeah, less than a thousand dollars for overtime.
We're trying to keep it to a minimum, but sometimes we just gotta do what we gotta do.
Alright, any other questions? Alright, thank you. Street committee, you might wanna hang around just in case they got.
Well, the street committee, the main thing in the street committee, we've ridden the streets and I would venture to say more than once.
Three times.
Three times, I knew we'd done this more than once. And money's measured, streets. When he gets the streets measured, then we will go back into committee and see what we can get done with the money that we have, the streets that we have. All the streets are not gonna be cut, but we're gonna do as many.
I know you got added money this time.
I know you got added money, but the cost, it keeps going up too, so we gotta do the best we can with what we have to work with.
Okay. Uh, you've got the proposed ordinance on car park, parking on streets, now that's been tabled and we're trying to do some more research, so you don't have anything there to act on. Uh, the, the street cuts and utilities repairs, if I might just go ahead and report, well, you know, we all approved procedure on that, on the cost and everything. The, uh, me and the city attorney have been trying to get that drafted up, we're still working on it this afternoon, I don't, uh, we're gonna have to, I think some of his equipment went out on him down at his office today.
My, uh, computer won't communicate with the printer.
We, we had to change some language in the, in the draft of the ordinance to make it do what y'all want done, and so bottom line is, we don't have that tonight, we're gonna have to bring that back to you, I apologize, but we are working on it.
Okay, so long as you're working on it.
The, the other one we do have, uh, nine forty-six, you wanna take that, that's the one about the burning?
Yeah, that's the, they made a reading or just?
Well, I know, I just wanna, I just wanna report that y'all recommended this.
Yes, we recommended this and, uh, I guess the chief, the committee and the chief and everybody worked on it and we have a ordinance.
You wanna put it on his first reading?
I, I move that we place ordinance number nine forty-six on his, uh, first reading.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, this will be nine forty-six, first reading, question or discussion? All those in favor of first reading?
Hand raised.
Gotcha, five, uh, in favor. Ordinance to men, ordinance number seven seventeen and number seven thirty-one and for other purposes, whereas the Warren City Council has determined that the burning of trash leaves or other combustible materials in city ditches, on city streets, or in any public right of way should not be permitted. Now therefore, section nine subsection B three of said ordinance number seven thirty-one is hereby amended to ban and prohibit the burning of any trash leaves or any other combustible materials at any time in city ditches, on city street, or within any public right of way.
Move that we suspend the rules and place ordinance number nine forty-six on his second reading.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, suspend the rules, place nine forty-six, second reading, question or discussion? All in favor, show of hands?
Hand raised.
Five in favor, still one absent. As proposed ordinance number five forty-six and ordinance to men ordinance number seven seventeen and number seven thirty-one and for other purposes.
I move that we suspend the rules and place ordinance number nine forty-six on his third and final reading.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, suspend the rules, place the ordinance on its, proposed ordinance on its third final reading. Question, discussion, all in favor, show of hands?
Hand raised.
Five in favor. Uh, whereas, uh, excuse me, an ordinance to men ordinance number seven seventeen and number seven thirty-one and for other purposes.
I move that we have got ordinance number nine forty-six.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to adopt the ordinance, nine forty-six. Final question or discussion on the adoption of the ordinance? You'll notice this does not have emergency clause, so it has to be published before it goes into effect. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of nine forty-six, raise your hand.
Hand raised.
Five votes in favor, one absent, so that does take care of that, that, believe that's about all your business. For tonight. Alright, community economic development committee, Alderman Marshall is, is not here, so uh, I think she was gonna give a report, I probably should let her do that later, unless more of the committee members, is anything you wanna say or present? Uh, they have met.
We gotta let the committee chair hear her report.
And they have, uh, you know, we've talked about industrial recruitment and the advisory committee, so that'll be considered further. Ways and Means Committee Chairman Henderson.
Know this.
Okay, thank you, you always say that with such a smile when you say that.
But we will, how, we're going to review, uh, the requests of the administration as it relates to employees.
Thank you. Alright, reports and boards, reports and businesses, and boards and commissions. Recreation, you gotta report, I know Kyle is out, we got softball, baseball going and I keep reporting to y'all that we're having huge crowds of people out there and a lot of activity going on. So he's out there trying to, to manage that, but you can look at his report, got any questions? I'll either try to answer them or we'll get you an answer.
We got new scoreboards installed yet?
I don't know if they're installed, but they were supposed to be working on them. Got two new scoreboards for the main, uh, baseball and softball fields, all donated by personal contributors in the community.
Why aren't we getting on the light?
Trying to get dry enough to get in there, get up on, get a lift to get us up there and fix it. Still a problem, but they're getting by. Planning Commission, I don't think we've got any business there. Uh, aviation, nothing, they haven't met, but they are meeting this week, so there'll be something in the future. Water and Sewer, you've got minutes of their monthly meeting, which was February the seventeenth, their last one, and, uh, then you've got their financial, well, there's a call meeting too, there was two of them there, I'm sorry, March first. And then you've got their financials, which are all there. Just always is for information, housing authority is not met, cultural center, uh, you've got, we've kinda talked about that earlier in the meeting, uh, but you do see the, the report. Now, you know, all those bills that we pay don't always fall in line with the monthly report because of when they come in and when we pay them and all that, we do this strictly by, on a monthly calendar basis on the report, but you can see the school, uh, use the cultural center in March, seventeen days, a hundred and twenty-three hours. So they are using it pretty regular, right now. Alright, still waiting on our other studies to be done.
Yeah, would you, would you just, I'd like to say that the city, we are trying to, to get costs.
Yes, actively working on that, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen a lot of negative talk and we're.
The cultural center needs some things done to it, there's no question about that, no question, roof, gutters, some foundation work. The building has been inspected by structural engineers, it is not falling in. Okay, I know it don't look good in some places, but it's not anything like some of these other buildings we've been talking about.
Thank you.
So I just want everybody to know that, I'm not worried about that, it's just got a lot of things that needs to be done to it to, to make it really usable and, and look as good as it should and function.
It just doesn't look good when, like the choir concert, bathrooms don't work, air conditioning doesn't work.
Well.
That's not the city.
No, I know it, we, they, they know the situation.
But the people don't know it, you know, so.
Gotcha, you're correct. Alright, now y'all so will find, you got a letter and I'm gonna, uh, begin with y'all's approval, assign this matter to the Community and Economic Development Committee, we're gonna low dip up with stuff, but, uh, uh, this letter's from Mr. David King, I think you can see, uh, basically he's making a request to head up an effort to raise some money, of course, we don't even know what we need yet for sure, anything like that, but, uh, he understands that, but he's also talking about renaming the cultural center. Now, the letter's, I think, pretty self-explanatory, uh, bottom line, uh, he feels like that by renaming it will help raise money. So we're gonna ask the committee to take a look at this, this is a, you know, really kinda two different things, but they're, they're tied together, so. Is it okay with everybody, I think I'm just assigning that to the committee and if y'all wish to do something else.
I, I move that, uh, the letter requests of David King, they refer to the Community and Economic Development, second.
Motion's made and seconded to assign that request to the committee, any question or discussion? All in favor, show of hands?
Hand raised.
She's still paying attention, five in favor.
Good head girl.
She's worked hard, right? And one, one absent. You will also see, uh, then is for information, you've got a letter, uh, from the Warren School Board, uh, basically stating that they are, they desire to continue to work with the city subject to what all this is gonna cost and how we're gonna pay for it. Uh, they're not offering any money or anything like that, but that they are, in other words, they're still in the future willing to look at continuing the current agreement or something like it with the city for the operation of it. So y'all can read the letter for yourself, but I just, this is what we got from them, that's a response to a letter I sent because they had verbally told us in the past that they pretty much was through with the, you know, we didn't wanna use it anymore, they were gonna do other things for their needs and, um, I think they're, you know, still, if something can be worked out, are still interested in having it available sometime or something, so that's where we are. You've got a copy which was requested of the agreement between the city and the school, uh, school district on the baseball softball complex. And I will report to you that in some recent conversations with the, uh, superintendent, uh, they are actually working with us on some several improvements, maintenance type things that need to be done, including getting the lighting repaired, it needs to be fixed. Uh, we're looking at painting the concession stand desperately in need of being spruced up and, uh, they're also helping with some of the cost of putting these new scoreboards in. The city's putting nothing into that, that's all being done by the school and the private donors. Um, anybody got any questions? Uh, new business, I've got a couple of nominations, we'll take them one at a time for our planning commission. Uh, I think everybody's from the council, all familiar with what the planning commission does, zoning, mobile homes, general. zoning, mobile homes, general planning for the city. I am nominating Mr. Herman Phillips to a term on the planning.
Who is he?
Who is he?
I'll second Joe.
You see who that is?
Yeah, make that motion.
I think we got a motion and you're making a motion.
Yeah.
It's his foot point, he's willing to serve, I've talked to him.
He, he serves as well at the housing court out there.
He's got a lot of history with, uh, with housing, public housing and so forth, but I think he'll be a good member. Any question or discussion on the nomination? All in favor, show of hands? All right, I got five votes in favor. Okay, don't, don't let him throw me off. You wasn't voting, that's why I was looking at you, so. I'm just kidding. Five votes in favor, so we, I just confirm, Mr. Phillips, the second one, another vacancy, is Mr. Nick Mann.
Make a motion. Make a motion, prove motion.
Motion seconded, total free move, seconded by Ms. Henderson. Same, same deal. Any question or discussion? He's also willing to serve. All in favor, show of hands?
Hand raised.
Five in favor, one absent. Now, this is another matter I'm gonna ask to be referred to the street committee. Uh, just very briefly, we got one business on Myrtle Street that's requesting, uh, on the public street where there is marked off parking for the public, requesting that signs be put up there, which the owner says he's willing to pay for, but he's asking for signs to be put up, designating those two parking places only for customers to his business.
I move we refer to the street committee. Second.
Got a motion, Henderson seconded, Mosley, uh, signed this to the street committee. Question or discussion? All in favor, show of hands?
Hand raised.
Five in favor, one absent. Do we have any announcements? I heard that on Henderson. Any, any announcements? Anything that, Carrie from the chamber, y'all got anything we need to remember?
Uh, this, uh, this coming Friday, I mean, Saturday, the fifteenth, is the, uh, farmer's market or it's market on.
Market on main, we've already talked about that, but that's, that's coming up this Saturday.
That's all we've, we've got now.
Bills for the month, second. Henderson motion seconded by Alderman Toll Free, we're finding out who's really wanting to get home and have supper. I think it's gonna find out how fast they move, I'm just kidding them. Question or discussion on any of the bills? This is for the month of March. All in favor of approval, show of hands? Five in favor. Our next meeting will be set for May the eighth at five thirty PM right here. Uh, with the agenda meeting for, uh, Thursday, the fourth of May at seven AM.
Move that, where's yours?
Second and second is made adjourned. All in favor, show of hands? Five in favor, where's yours? Thank y'all.